On a right guard that can work and. There's the announcement yet, but momentarily the discussion will be. Cool. Oh, we are. Be of him so. All right. Thanks for being patient with us. Uh. We think Friday is for the order. In the case of my research, do you read this? Dear my father. Almighty God and good creator. We thank you, Lord, for this day, Lord. We thank you for all you provide for us. We pray, Lord, that you would continue to ride our needs and. Just help us, Lord, to make good decisions for the barrel. We pray, Lord, for all our leaders, Lord, those in state and federal government that. You would be with them and give them wisdom also. Again, Lord, we thank you for all you provided in Jesus' name. Amen.
I mean, I please whom standing for the fight. By the way, you do consider the right. The nice thing for America. He's very tolerant, which is sad. Or I should. On our God. If you solve. We're delivering. It's probably. Thank you, maybe see it. And second time when we came though. They have. It's right.
It's sitting. For us. Uh, passport, mapping, following, passport, that we call. Are active with notice and gave a passport for zero one member.
That's true. You know, two, uh, one motion basically. Time agenda. So for precedent, I make commercial to improve the time agenda by two seven. Twenty twenty five comes.
On something.
Motion to try to count the book, Lord, and. Funding for approval of. Four minutes of March the twelfth, the group courage, the veil of. Uh, marching, kind of those stores. People have done, he's done a check out all the favors and they are. Um, both. With that unanimous. Passes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, okay, so we've had a good month here. Uh, we awarded two more. Facade grants. Um, I know last time we had three that we were looking at, so two more have been. Processed and the. The property owners have been notified. One is for exhibit B art gallery. They're going to put a nice metal overhang on the side door that's along Main Street. Because there will be an entrance there for the new um rental spaces he has below. So it looks really nice and I think that'll spruce up that sidewalk area right there because it's kind of plain all the way down. Um, and the other one was for new signage uh above both sides of the door at Scooter's Bike Shop. So they'll be getting some new signs there, so that'll look nice. Um, our mentorship program, this is through economic development. I mentioned this last time, last month, but we have put everything through, met with the high school and. We have the application out for Satterton High School juniors and seniors. Um, we're going through the final selection process now. I think we have about nine students interested and we can take five. So we will be selecting those. The deadline is next week to have them start with us and then. We will focus on event planning for Third Friday. The marketing for those events as well. And also activities um for the kids to do in Kid Zone and everyone. Will act as a mentor. I will be for the event. We have our marketing team being the mentor for. The marketing and then we have um Bright Path who is the sponsor of Kid Zone. They will be the mentor. So the students will have people to work with and we're really excited to get them involved. And hopefully bring some more of the students in to help volunteer. Uh, assessments. Assessments were finished. Um, Kylie and I reviewed them all over the weekend from the bookkeeper. And they will be going out this week, so everyone will receive their assessments by the end of the week. Last month, we are a reauthorization committee met. And started going through the paperwork um for all our goals and plans moving forward. I'm really excited for it because we had a lot of things happen in the last year. That we want to keep doing and add on to that, so our plan for. Past twenty twenty five and on is really, I think, gonna be really great for everybody in this town, so. Uh, look for more on that. Um, I also had a great meeting with um Brent Burn. He is part of the uh Satterton Telford Historical Society. And we're just starting some conversations now, but. Um, we're thinking about, they have an idea of doing. Placks at some of the historical buildings in town and having it be almost like a walking tour. I know some other towns that do that around here. And partnering perhaps with Satterton connects. We will make it so we almost can do a digital map. Of more places in the town, so people that come in, let's say for a walking tour. Will then know where they can stop and eat, other retail shops they can stop at, really give them all that information. In these like QR codes and information that's available. So we're just starting that conversation. But so far, who I've talked to on the board, we have our meeting tomorrow night, so it'll be presented. A really enthusiastic about this project and I think that would be a nice partnership with the historical society. And finally, our biggest thing we've done the last is we hired a new marketing company. We are now working with a company called Elevated Angle Media. They're actually located. In Telford, um, but we're bringing it back local because. We were working with a place in Plymouth Meeting who was great. But we noticed over the last couple of months, we were missing that day to day um local flavor. In our posts, in the know how, what was going on, so this team really, you know, uh. Comes to all our things, comes to all of our events, eats at the restaurants. I mean, they really know what's happening, so. We are gonna be working with them and they have some great ideas and some of the things they offer that the others didn't. Will be able to take advantage of like drone video. Do some nice business highlights with them. So yes, that's all I have for this evening. Any questions? Nope. Already, well, almost. Got some more vendors, but everything else is set, so. Looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's. Are there any other questions? Please write one off to administrative department. Um, I have two events to announce. First is uh. Fire hole, which is the Earth Day cleanup. Which is a very awkward day, the day before Easter. Uh, Saturday. The nineteen. And so on Saturday, the nineteenth, it's just super low heat as it is every year for anybody that's ever attended. This year, we're gonna focus on the railroad track crossing at the. Central and Railroad Avenue. Which is uh. Not well maintained at all by. Railroad, I guess, that's all, but so we'll just do some brush things. So if anybody wants to can. Council or anybody else. Bring your own tool. It'll be at nine AM Saturday, April nineteenth. At that intersection, central and. So without them. And we'll just do our best to clean up a little. And if that day doesn't work for you because it's before Easter. Just go out into the long, fun Earth Day. And something else of yourself. Uh, oh ma'am, can you bet on that? You can. She did it last year. It's actually a really good time and don't worry about. Again, she there, there's light work, there's a little bit of heavy work, but it's a great time to. So it's allowed them to go to interact with you guys. That's what I tried to take to that much. That's what I did. Free friends to share. But I think I'm. Um, the other thing is that the fire company is having cash bingo on April twenty sixth. So if you want more information on that, towards open at five o'clock. Tucker Berry. And then the only other thing I'd uh like to take a couple minutes to talk about is our police department. Since this is the last meeting, you'll. Look over to the side of rooms, you know, Chief Hall is not here. Uh, for five years, we would like to have Chief Hall. Uh. Admitted his resignation and uh unfortunately. Was too soon to retain this meeting, or. Doesn't probably have more honor for it. But uh. He's bought to other. Other other vulnerabilities, non-uniformed policing, the the way he put it after a twenty six year career. And time in the fire service and as a MFT, so uh we thank Chief Hall for his five years of service. And we're fortunate to be in good hands with Sergeant Jeff Lukens, who will be serving as officer in charge. While we engage the process to. Uh, find a new chief of the police. So thanks Sergeant Lukens for stepping up. Uh, in a time we weren't expecting, so soon after you become a chief, this mission. But uh Jeff will keep the lights on for us while we serve for a new. Police chief. And we have just started to engage with that company, Estirent. Uh, who does this full time. To find a new. Chief candidate, so in the process, it is still being laid out. We hope that within. Ninety days, maybe a little bit longer than that, we might have our candidate from a pool of. By by going the route of hiring a consultant firm, just like we did with the Royal Manager. While we're not just like that, but. Something like that. Uh, we can, we can have a big pool of candidates and choose the most qualified ones. And then hopefully we can present that, because we're, we work those up at our chief's place and uh. Get the ground up, so. So you all know what's happening, uh. Move John through, really attention to that, but uh. You're letting the fear, this, that our police officers are good, they're good on the streets, they keep our town safe. And Sergeant Lukens will help keep them in line a little bit while uh while we're in this cage. So. If you have any questions about that or what's going on, they're all, so talk to me or direct it to. All I can. Thank you, sir. In transition to Sergeant Lukens, do you have any updates uh on your?
I generated March report for you. Um. For the month of March, we had four vehicle crashes. Three of them involved injury. Um. We conducted three hundred and fourteen traffic stops. A third of them citations were issued since we got reports of. The detour, reliance road. A lot of congestion on Second Street and. Um. You thought it, and they said that people were neglecting that there were stop signs there. So Chief Hall had put out a directive. Well, we hold under this and consider going did excellent job. Well, there shows a peak hours monitor. For the month total, we had one thousand one hundred and eighteen incidents, thirty six per day on average. Um. For the annual whole will be two thousand four hundred and ninety two. So that sees a twenty percent increase over the last year. Um, the peak times were from four PM to midnight. To five hundred and four incidents. And that on. Um. And then the. Rubbery Park. Has been vandalized again several times during the month. We increased patrols. I asked the bathroom checks be done. Several times a shift for each officer, so they should be, until they get locked, they need a clock line, but they're making sure they get locked, really. Um. I already talked about that, the traffic complaints due to the detour. Um. I wanted to thank Public Works. For the plumbing repairs that they did, they spent two days doing plumbing repairs in the, the building doors. Um. That that came in much because everybody was waiting over one bathroom. Oh. And we have almost a third of our annual training. Completed today. Everybody's. Working on getting over training.
I think that was a good part of the.
Yes.
Very good, officer. Mother, any questions? Sorry. I would say, I saw you saying about Satterton Park. I saw Hatfield Township to build, you know, and do construction there. And I saw them post that their first day. Uh, like whatever opening with. By construction site, kids just like rip the building apart. Stuff on it. Clogged all the toilets. So, uh, not just here, perhaps. It's definitely, or not, that needs to better, but uh I think helps for them. Is the vandalism severe or is it just kind of? Heavy stuff like. I deserve.
It's heavy, well, like if you don't consider it heavy like it was last year, it seemed to be like a repeat, they don't get the whole wall again. Like so, I saw they broke one of the street tree that were planted. So I, I can only assume, I've tried to watch video to get like it, because I noticed that. When I pulled into the parking lot last week and I was like, the tree was there yesterday, so I went back to a video, but then once it got dark, I couldn't see. See somebody went in there at nine five and pulled on it, snapped it.
Do you feel there's enough? Coverage there so that you can monitor things? Is there better equipment that would help you see? Like in when it's dark out, so you actually see what's going on? Sniper. I don't know. There are a fair amount of counts. There are. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Good question, Paul. I have the code, public court.
Yeah, so everybody should have got our line, full report this month. Have a lucky time to get that done. Obviously, some of the highlights. Uh, started, uh, Lucas does, yeah, we did replace them with all the four inch and three inch plate by me, the whole. Basement in the basement and the beef station. And I think there was a lot done on my burner office side too, but. Pretty much almost all we played down there on the loose. Um, we. We did get out. Early uh March. For uh cold patching, got on that one, the weather broke a little bit. We took care of a lot of that. Um, we did do uh two rounds a week, we actually got. Uh, two full trailer different this year in the spring. And then most of the other work even uh. You know, a good work I had for the sculptor area. Uh, everything, all the hard stuff again. Just need to get out of the frame, so you can get some dirt back in and put it back on. You, you. They didn't have a nice spot, but they didn't really mess the fuck up too much. Last pour at the wall, that's only like, you know. Uh, I am there all I have to do by the wall. Um, other than that. Let's see, fucking long. And we had some vandalism, or not vandalism, but. Two of our uh concrete tunnel doors got out of the way and fell off the track, so. In the process of getting them out of what you're, I think they got them built already. And when you can be him up, so get them up. Pusher come on, concentrate. A good attraction for people too. We all crush things, but we'll, we'll get them up there.
Okay, question, please. Thank you. For Friday.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, I, I submitted my report uh to council. Um, I just like to point out two things. The first one is uh item number one. Uh, it's on the agenda tonight, seven days, uh, wire subdivision. Lot consolidation of, of, of my comment to that portion of. The agenda. The other item is uh item five. Uh, I directed a uh non-uniformed uh defined contribution. Uh ordinance uh. With words, uh, consideration. First reading, um, it's for what would be new employees going forward. Right now, there's a defined. And the plan that our employees have, this would be a defined uh contribution plan. Uh, similar to. Okay. Uh, and again, that would be for any. So we sent that to the pension administrator for the. Well, receives of comments uh in the last air to. Uh, or that, so I suggest that we have. Bachelor. I think on that. Student hall.
But. Thank you. I have a couple of questions.
Um, I, a couple of things that fall under, but I'll defer my comments to there. Um, the twenty four audit was submitted with speed. Um, to also have the consolidated statement being advertised, the keeper as required. Um, we did not receive like the full report that was already comfortable yet with all the narrative items, but overall, there were not any. Like, because things. Cross my attention. Um, you should see that report. So sometimes in the early summer, we'll see. Um. Me put out notice uh last week that our new payment processor and billing. System is up and operational finally, so. We now have the capability of doing the eight D payments, the map to reduce fees compared to the credit card payments. The keeper was billing now that could go um to enroll and get a. Now fee in rather than having a keeper bill. And then additionally auto pay, which I know will uh give a lot of people confidence. So you can go ahead and set up the auto pay with this new system. Uh, the trust bills have gone out, so additionally, they do our. Bill printing itself is going to a third party company. Um, we can actually send bills for a dollar and two cents a piece. Uh, including postage and everything, so they're doing that for us, so the bills may look a little bit different if we hit them. Um. We can help people set up their accounts. There's lots of information on the website about how you interact with the new platform and. Uh, how you can integrate it with your bill and walk through all that. If anybody else wants to take the call the office, I mean. Know what they're doing with it and they can help you set up. Um, we're hoping that this will be people a lot of money, our residents a lot of money, but then also our staff, um, with additional. And costs are paid as well. Uh, there will still be a fee for credit card use, so that, uh, I think that. Can take three dollars for. Thirty cents. Three percent or minimum of two dollars. And then with E D H, I think a dollar, a dollar. Would you not instead would be like a direct debit from your bank account. Last thing is that home memberships have been on sale for just over a month. Um, I met with Park and Red block speed and discussed how membership sales are going. We've had a lot of success. The last couple of weeks. Um. This time last year, we were putting, I was under forty thousand dollars in sales for memberships and this year we're at over like ten. So the pre-sale went really great, uh, memberships are going really well. Um, I'm not like crowding my chickens yet because it might slow down as we get closer to pool season, because people got them a little bit earlier this year, but I'm really happy. Um, and that will help us in paying for the pool management because those bills start coming in the spring. Uh, that is a reduced cost, which we discussed uh with Park and Red. How will prove that agreement with uh. Dynamic, I think now it's the theme company, Ben and Ken, who will be doing our less burning again. They've rebranded themselves, they've restructured their company, and I think Dynamic is a quality sound. Um. That new price is like thirteen thousand dollars, it'd be cheaper than what it was. Before we negotiated stocking changes and then additionally. Have provisions in there for closures and credits and that kind of stuff to help feed. On costs for that as well. I hope this guy, our full wealth, they go over to this. And that's all I have for now.
Hey, thank you. Are there any committing reports to?
Park and Reg Met, um, we have a little field trip down in West Creek Park. And uh, we're gonna be turning the tennis courts. There'll be two, you know, pickleball courts and one tennis court. Now we're gonna be reservicing it, new beds, new fencing. I'm listening.
We're gonna look at some equipment upgrades potentially down there. If I need to figure out, need to fix that up a little bit. Uh, the fences are really not cheap and that's kind of the most like apparent visually when you go down there. Um, our thought is with. I've made attention of the fees to the large front behind the building and. That's what a great partnership with Rotary, there are other parks in the community. Having some attention and the hot some available funds that's dedicated to recreation, so we're gonna point some of those funds to. Some of these smaller parks that just need a little bit of sprucing up. Um, the equipment down at, at West Street is solid, it just. Has. From. Here issues. Uh, a lot of the P and that red stuff, so like a nice first P, right, go away, something mulch and that kind of stuff, so I think you can get away with some fairly low cost. Improvements down there, stretch our money a little bit that we have cut away. Um, the tennis court, the wall combination is. Going to be the perfect material that we, on the basketball court. So our crew will actually be trained in applying that. They'll repurpose it and then they'll apply it with the help of Field Master, who needs the P, and then they'll need the P in our careers to come. Um, with the training that they're provided for, so it's a great option. Uh, to repurpose what we already have.
Nice, thank you. Good job, man. Thank you, Sarah.
Any other report? All right then, I will now open up a comment if you are a resident. Or property owner, if you just remember within the borough, I didn't go into the community.
Hi, everybody.
Uh. Anyone with a Michigan.
Oh, ignore that. Ignore that. I don't care. Um, hi, I'm Matt. I live on School Lane. You guys are familiar with me. If you guys see me walking around with my two dogs. Or you've seen me get flipped off by people as I tell them to slow down. Um, so I know we have the. Speed sign at the bottom of the hill on School Lane. But I feel like that's. Not being uh enforced. So in cases where I've seen, you know, I live right on the street, so. I, at night, I hear like basically drag racing. Or it's mainly when school lets out or rush hour. Uh, that people are just racing once they get off abroad and they turn onto School Lane. And I don't know if they're just trying to set records. Um, but I haven't seen anything to deter people. Uh, for how long it's been there. And I'm just wondering what can be done. Um. To kind of have any police presence or anything. Um, just to get people to slow down. Because it's. Been probably what, six months since. That's been put out. And you know. The, the good thing is less people are speeding up because the light got fixed, while the timing got rechanged. But yeah, just trying to see what can be done about that. That's, that's all I got.
Probably won't deliberate it right now, but.
No, that's fine.
Question for you, though, you mentioned the sign, you're talking about the portable sign.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's collecting some data as well, I know.
I did want to point out.
They did too, in public safety committee, we talk about it all the time, um. So.
And I don't want to paint anything bad, but I've also witnessed officers. Going forty and over. Um, so.
Fine and.
Yeah.
You know, we're not stopping for pedestrian, yeah, things like that, but we'll, we'll work on it and again. The justice.
I'm.
There, feel free to uh email the manager or anybody, you can find it on, on the website.
Sure.
So we'll, we'll take another review book. Uh, I don't want to put sorry, get it on the spot.
No, that's fine.
Thursday, there.
Yeah.
Some of the problems and concerns that, that we have there.
Sure. I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's straight in the. That was the bottom, right? And then more open up some like the what? Three town, well. Why that, both, both ways. Anyone else? You guys are like me, trying to shame people because you're staring them down. Come on, get up. All right, thank you all very much, and I'll uh close the public comment uh section, although it will be. Uh, I may have opened up a foreign opportunity with, with the, uh, the business that's evening, if necessary. In which case, woman, for the business of. Tonight, so seven A, Sarah, behind.
Yep, so we have a vacancy at current line civil service on the end of. I don't know, maybe it's the top three year old service. Very well for many years, so we did not fully understand this day. Um, so I have a little bit of steam up to do, so, um, one of the former alternate member has. Uh, volunteered to move into the permanent position, so her, that's. A, um, Ricky Boyle is a resident of the borough, pushed me under a laptop, and he volunteered to serve as an alternate member. Um, and I feel associated with qualified candidates to do that. Uh, so I'm recommending that you be appointed as the alternate member. And then your next one will be to fill that spot that was heated by the first. For five, running.
Sure, the. Uh, town put before I take a motion for that, uh, does everyone know, Mr. Boyle? And then you would have seen the packet for. And a van. And presenting some stuffs out and then say hello. You're welcome to, but not mandated. I, I think many of us do, you are ready. Would you like to come out there? Say hello to everyone?
I apologize. I wasn't actually anticipating this tonight, so it would have just been better. Uh, my name is Tim Boyle, uh, resident, uh, Sattenborough for. Twenty-three years. Uh, my name is Tim Boyle, uh, resident, uh, San Antonio for twenty-three years. Um, currently working in Franconia Township, I've been with them for twenty-four years. Twenty-five years total in law enforcement, started with the Sheriff's Department prior to that. Um. I believe my experience. Working. Will uh, be beneficial even as an alternate to the Civil Service Commission. And uh. I get to see both sides of everything, um, a better understanding of. The, the police side. And uh, you know, an unbiased opinion, looking forward to any challenges or, or issues that may come up. Um, but. Do you have any questions on? An open book?
We believe, thank you for.
Thank you.
More.
No problem.
Thanks so much, and I'm motion, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion to appoint Tammy Boyle as alternate member of the Civil Service Commission with a term to expire. Summer thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
All that. I have motion by Councilman Rodger's for the question of, can you board the alternate member of the Civil Service Commission? So, summer thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, five years, long time. Um. Hurry. Hello. Twenty, twenty thirty, I just added. Couple years, holy moly. Yeah, I'm still stuck in head, I make my own book, all right, three years, that's still a long time. Uh, all right, there's. Any additional comment, questions deserve? All right, then, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote? Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Sarah. All right. Uh, Sarah already mentioned, uh, Tammy Daggstino, so that's, uh, that's no brainer, they have motion for that as well.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tammy Daggstino to the Civil Service Commission with a term to expire summer thirty-first, twenty-third.
All that. Oh, that really five years?
That is.
We may be tricked. Okay, so that is a five-year appointment and a motion for Tammy Daggstino to the Civil Service Commission with terms expired twelve thirty, one of. Point of thirty, all in favor, please say aye.
All right, I heard.
Any opposed? All right, that's it. After that, we're on. For the small order and sewer grant open.
So Neil tried for a D D grant a couple of months ago for uh, improvement to the flowers or some in copper plants. I'm not the first here enough to use Tyler, but. Uh, there is now an opening for small water sewer grant program, um, and uh, you're recommending that we apply for. Aeration systems that Tyler's kind of vetted and are near some vetted. Uh, I did massive grant five hundred thousand, that's what I'm asking you guys to approve. Uh, I don't have the exact cost, but the twenty engineers working on like the concrete stall and all of those aspects. Uh, they can't exceed five hundred because that's what. The grant. Limit is. Um, this project is something we would have to do at some point anyway, so we're trying to eliminate how we can do it. Um, this has a one-third match. Um, but we would have to sign with the grant. Um. Agreement to budget or finance our portion of that. This is essentially just giving us permission to not got anything, so we're just saying a bit to go, um, if you were awarded, it would come back to council first as well, it'd be important.
Okay, before we think too much, may I, you know, clarify a question or two now, so. How much do you feel on the grant application you have to have for perspective of the project?
So it depends on the grant, um, the engineer related to Tyler that this grant is not as detailed as someone that we submitted at the committee. So that one was really detailed, I just wanted my hair out trying to like keep together all the factors of it. This one is more of a water concept, um, which is primarily the cost, but we have identified variation systems that we'd like to use to with the technology that we'd like to have. And Tyler's already specified all of that out. Uh, so we have that portion done, you need the engineering force, they're not really on top of your force, but they, but the details of it are not as specific as the one that we filed for.
Perfect, so in, in theory, if we had to do a third, that's. Uh, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or something, so if we get the five hundred. We could potentially knock out seven hundred thousand dollars of. Project.
So no, they cap the limit for um, the grant fee is five hundred, so it would be a third of the five hundred, you can't exceed the five hundred cap for the small water.
Oh, okay.
So we would be responsible for a person for five.
Yeah, okay, that's it.
And that would more than cover the aeration work.
Yeah, all right, thank you. All right, I think you changed the, ask any clarification if nothing there, but may I have a motion for twenty twenty-five that's a.
President, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Resolution two thousand twenty-five oh eight authorizing the submission. To the small order, human grant programs of upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Yeah, motion by Councilman Banana and Huber. With a free resolution, the proposed recognition of twenty twenty-five that's oh eight for the submission. For the small water sewer grant program based for the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the whole, there's no question they've been done. I have one question. Hey. We've decided that no. Do we lose the grant or can we shift it for something else?
It's a project, it teaches that like unexpectedly, I guess we're using it. I think we used that, that's that. All, sorry. So all the money that they're gonna get is just the five hundred thousand.
Okay, so we don't, we don't go over, we don't lose any credit. Okay, okay.
We would, the top is that all on that.
Okay. Good question, man, anything else? And all in favor, as, as much as like the aye. All right, you opposed? All right, thanks. Now we're on to twenty twenty-five thousand seven. Have you got any clues on our, I think.
Thank you. So, uh, I'm thinking this evening, uh, for consideration is a. Minor subdivision to the, including a lot consolidation for the properties located at. Four fifty-nine Lincoln Avenue, Spurcellian South Fifth Street and Seventy South Fifth Street. Property uh, located at Spurcellian South Fifth Street is a vacant lot currently. It consists of six thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, first lot area. Which will be subdivided and consolidated to the property located at four fifty-nine Lincoln Avenue. Will then have an increase in square footage to nine thousand seven hundred. Seventy, I'm s- I'm sorry, nine thousand seven hundred sixty-five square feet. And if was that a lot located at Seventy South Fifth Street, it will increase to fifteen thousand five hundred square feet. All three properties here are located in the R one residential zoning district. The resolution has been prepared and shared with the applicant. There's been one condition added, um, since it's circulating. There is a, a shed, um, located on upstate of Plaza property. Um, I added a condition indicating that that is a permitted shed pursuant to the sonnet and viral. Ordinances and it adds a preceding out on. Um, Gilwan Associates and Montgomery County Planning Condition have issued review letters. On this minor subdivision, which are attached to the resolution and incorporated by reference, the Sonnet and Bureau Planning Commission date. Be on March fifth and recommend a primal subject to the various conditions outlined in the resolution of who you receiving that. Um, so with that background, is, am anyone here representing, uh, the Arizona application?
For that, as you're here, I'm representing, just a very technical question.
Hello?
Yeah, hi.
You doing?
Um, so does anyone have any questions with regard to the proposed, uh?
Yeah, misunderstood, you have a. Well, and.
Okay.
You know, I pass around that over sketch. Um, to make it a little easier to understand. Okay, often owns the parcel that's outlined in blue. Those give the two lot. The parcel is owned and the parcel outlined in green. The optic wants transferred to yellow portion to the part of the property. So that would make, um. Two rectangular properties instead of, uh, the optic's trying to be in the L C. And she also has the garage on that other vacant parcel, so. Um, that would clean this up a little bit and then we both have consolidated for the description. Um.
Curiosity, have it, the up, the updates yet? And they all say property in the first place with a shed on, not that though.
Well, they had, they had two separate lots, um. But in, in the past, the borough issued a permit for the garage for expanding your lot. On the vacant lot.
I, I, I see you.
So at that point in time, that, the two, the her two lots should actually be consolidated with that, that, I think. So they don't seem to not last, but look, look like an end, that's it.
You know, your neighbors were like Soursen Legend. Really, I have that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, like never missed a meeting.
Yep.
Right there.
Yep.
You sure for us, not that that matters, but. How often?
And your house is really beautiful today.
Thank you.
Hey, um. We can add some, uh. Good favor, I'm gonna make you that, okay. Um, if there, let me take the motion and then we'll, I'll, I'll still give you, I'll change the power of the page and send it there.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minor subdivision and lot line it up on that. Work at the iron Lincoln Avenue and South East South Coast Street.
One second.
Thanks, Matt, I have motion by Councilor Littlefield and the Dana for approval of the minor subdivision and line adjusting at four fifty-nine Lincoln Avenue and Seventy South Fifth Street. Are there any additional comments, questions, or things on?
I just have one question, I think, um, so it's on a resolution that the board of council this evening, it's all upon your division.
Uh, yes, I, I.
Hi, sir.
Believe we have.
You're okay with all the conditions outlined in kind of resolution?
Yes.
All right.
Oh, um, I forgot, Ed, uh, so did you do the survey?
I did.
Uh, okay, you'll be abstaining from this vote, correct? Thank you, sir. Uh, okay then, you have the motion before you, uh, besides that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, depending on speed. Uh. Actually, I can introduce you for that. So for town vote, um. We already, we had the background from Sarah previously for approval of the very exit contract and the addition into this motion would include. The emergency management services as well, so. I'm gonna ask Darrell to read the motion, there's just a couple of minor. Word adjustment that will listen to, will have, have it marked up, but the word contract will be substituted with proposal. And this will also be dubbed into a form of agreement which will be found acceptable to the borough, so. Uh, it's a little bit.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the presented proposal with very high set. Uh, for P A U C C services. Rental inspection, zoning support and code enforcement. At the rate of a hundred and twenty dollars per hour and merchants management services. At a rate of fifty, five hundred per month. Subject to the form agreement acceptable to the borough.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Donna, and I'll be very pleased to say this, we have a motion by Councilor Littlefield and Rogers for approval of the seven, per, proposal with very high set for. Company to be served in sample inspection, zoning support and code enforcement. At a rate of a hundred and some dollars per hour, as well as emergency management services at a rate of five hundred dollars. Per month, all of this will be dubbed into a form of agreement that is found acceptable, uh, by further review to the borough. Okay, are there, now, any comments, questions, or concerns regarding this proposal? There are none, all favor, then please say aye. Uh, any opposed? The man, and now, but what may be applying a motion of the evening provision? Sixty minutes.
So. In twenty-four, we did a joint contact with, I called me institutions with Pelver Borough. And that was, I think it was for three years, but we had to renew here. So they, they worked for us last year, um, Pelver have extended theirs through twenty twenty-five, dating and they gave us pricing because I saw for the. New roads and that's the new version, right, the new version. The new version, so we just need to formally extend our contract through twenty twenty-five, um, without fall.
For the end of this year or for till next, next?
May.
May and may.
So we'll extend for one more year and then we will have off next year to extend one more time.
That, because the contracts are asphalt main and solutions and, but it's for joint participation with Pelver Borough, right?
Pelver and others together, they got out.
Done.
Yeah, one of the streets that we're doing a, a, like a.
Done. All right, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the extension of the contract with asphalt main and solutions for chip seal equipment with operator and ultra thick bonding wearing course for a period of one year.
Okay, and?
All set.
And a motion by Councilor Brisket and Monday for approval for extended contract that's called. In conclusion for chip seal equipment, there's operator and also thing on is wearing course for a period of one year. If it's because of that, that's the new version. And. Comments, questions, or concerns? There are none, all in favor of that one year contract extension, please say aye. All right, any opposed? We have, okay. Uh, this for the audience, at this point, uh, it's necessary for us to go into executive session to discuss, uh, personnel matters. So we would do that privately in the back conference room. And I won't hold out this meeting, however, we have, uh. No intention to come back into it, so don't wait for it. Uh. Uh, anything, of course, uh, if you know, so that you, you guys can go, point you, you sort of go up that, so may I have a motion to. Uh, as, as your executive question, but.
First one to return to the executive seat.
Thank you, Darrell, and it's over, thank you, guys.